No.
We don't have any additions, right? The agenda is presented.
And I work on today.
Oh, we're all professionals.
And she's not another one in the back there.
She we should be the back row then.
Which was. I wondered where that was.
Ready.
See it.
Okay, alright. Call this town of vinyl and select we're reading for November twenty nine, two thousand twenty-two to order. Roll call, we have Jake Thompson, that's a Leslie Dyers accent. Don Young, I think it was Leslie online, sorry, Leslie is on line. Don Young and myself, Pam Alley, Marjorie Stratton, town manager, and with the bunker W time court taking minutes. I move we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor? Leslie, yes. Prove the minutes from the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two select word meeting. So moved. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Number four, approved and signed treasurer's warrants number twenty-two. They moved.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Number five, communications. You don't have any communication, correct? Alright, so number six, speakers from the floor.
Just from here, okay?
That's fine.
Oh, no, I guess stay in front, so I'll see you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Hogan, I'm here from Vital David Land Trust, I just wanted to stop in, I've seen you all via Zoom. And I wanted to stop in person, introduce myself and offer you the uh opportunity to come visit me anytime that's convenient for you, I know. Because I've sat on your side of the table and and still do sometime, sometimes, and believe me, it's a delight to not have you tonight. Um, I know the questions you have to answer. And I I just urge you to please come to me and get the answers.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Alright. Then we shall move on to number seven, committee and department reports appointment. Seven A sewer commission appointment Bruce Cohen.
Um, so Bruce is a seasonal resident, but he's willing to uh serve on the sewer commission. I don't know. I have heard some comments that uh a sewer commissioner should also live in the sewer district, but. Um, Pam is on the sewer commissioners and said, and I read the ordinance, there's nothing in the ordinance that says that.
Because it's a town owned entity.
Um, this is. And Bruce has been on the um the feels, correct?
But because of the fact that the town owns, unlike the water district, which is a second, is a separate thing.
So he wants to be on the commission or he wants to be?
Sewer commissioner.
He wants to be sewer commissioner, okay.
And these are annual appointments, so it would just be until the end of.
Of June.
June twenty twenty-three. And we currently, we have, we only have three members, so we need two more people.
He would only be absent for. Will he be absent, he could zoom in on two meetings.
His zooming doesn't work where he lives, I could tell you that.
Off island?
Yes.
He doesn't have.
Doesn't have good connection for his zooming. Sorry, I'm on the floor, sorry.
He can, he can call though, right?
He can call.
We, we don't do that, but I suppose we could set up a call, we usually zoom or we zoom with main water.
Okay. But if someone's participating by phone call, I know it's not, you don't have the video, but. Even those that sometimes connect by Zoom, you can't maybe have your video on because of your connection, so. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, isn't he?
What does he bring to the table other than fill in a position?
Bingo. I mean, I like Bruce and I'm sure he would bring something, but I don't know, he just would like to.
He's had experience on the uh Board of Appeals. And that's what all I know, you you know what that is, right, the planning board. Um, I don't think he has any experience with the um sewer district.
He was on the tour that we gave a long time ago and he was very interested.
Say.
I have worked with Bruce through the code enforcement and planning board and appeals. He's very knowledgeable, he will read upon it, he will ask all the questions. And I just know his Zoom doesn't work, but he could phone in, which we, he's done. And, but he's very, very capable of doing. Reading the ordinances and trying to help you figure it out.
Well, as I say, he was on, on that tour that V L T. Gave several years ago. And, well, yeah, quite a while ago now, but he was very interested and I was surprised to see so many people interested, so.
How often does the commission meet, once a month?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, okay, so you don't really miss it, only call into two, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it's on a, not even a year basis, so it works out, and he wants the job again, and I, I don't see what we have to lose here, nobody else is offering up their services either, so. I move we appoint Bruce Cohen, the sewer commissioner for a term ending in June twenty twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Thank you, Bruce, for volunteering. Seven B, public works.
Public works, um, I sent you folks, I think, uh, or you have in your packets. Um, a couple papers, not sure which ones you're looking at first. Um, the sidewalks, we discussed the sidewalks at the last meeting. Um, I, Marjorie shared with me um the comprehensive plan. From a while back, some of that has been completed, but there is still a law that's very valid in here. Um, so I kind of did a quick little spreadsheet of, I don't know if you have this little spreadsheet under there, see, yep, yep. Um, just to give you a quick um look at the top three locations that I feel we should probably be focusing on first. Two of which are the pathways to the school. And then the third is obviously High Street on the backside, especially um from the fountain up to. The first driveway of. Um.
Anderson.
Anderson, thank you. I'm gonna look at those. Um, I also um spoke with Kevin Moore. About possibly giving, getting us some numbers for what it might be um to have uh him do some concrete work for us to save us on mobilization. Understanding we'll probably still put it out, we did. Um, but I feel like if we can get some numbers from him, we could get a firm plan on how much we could do annually and go from there, so this was step one. And then the second step will be to talk to him, he wanted to wait till first of the year to to talk, he's really busy right now, trying to get his final stuff done, so. My plan is to sit down with him first of the year and discuss.
Good.
Some thoughts there.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and again, this, the comprehensive plan is great, it's got pictures and and a lot of, a lot of detail in it, so I kind of went with that and then just. Updated it to to where we are now.
Okay.
I don't think you have the. I'm not sure you've made the, yeah, the memo, yes, but the the job is strictly so.
Oh, um, apparently I did not get the update, remember at the last meeting? Um, you had mentioned that you wanted a amendment to the transfer station and. I, and Millie said she did update it, but I didn't get that, so I guess we'll just forego approving those.
Let me just do it next one.
It was, it's the next item on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Um, and then I guess my last thing is the memo I sent out. I have no plans or I'm pushing the button right away, however, the eighty-five hundred, as you guys all know, is. It's starting to wear pretty hard, I just put a new alternator in it on first of this week yesterday. And it's, it's getting in worse and worse shape, it's. Like when we looked at trade and trade and value, they offered me thirty-four hundred for it, sorry. Um, thirty-four hundred for it. Um. In the meantime, um Jake Stanley saw me and offered me a bit more, um, ten thousand for it. Um, or nine thousand in the plow that he originally bought from us that went on uh the Western Star, I think was the first plow the Western Star came with. Had I known that prior to spending all the money on the new, on fixing the plow from the accident, well. You'll probably say just a ton of money there, but we didn't know it was even still available, so. Um, but anyway, I'd like to use it for a little bit, if needed, over the winter, but I'd like the okay to push the button and put it out for bid, we sell it. I want to feel that we're ready for that. And hopefully I'll feed that money into a fund towards new appointment.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, that was good.
Any objections, questions?
Sounds good.
Oh, well, yeah, I'm moving them, um, I also gave out in the packet, because I know Dawn had a lot of questions. Um, if you look at page forty-eight. The brush and tree removal section that talks about um in the. Second and third paragraphs, going on to the next page, that it discusses the, the municipal. Rules of shrubbery and and such being cut down. Um. I, I think it's how it's read, but to me, it sounds like we can get into some trouble with with shade or. Um, any kind of ornamental trees and shrubbery that people do not wish the pet trim removed or cut down. It does further say that uh we can, if we feel that it's a risk. A potential harm that we can act on that and and cut trim to what we want. But I think we have to have a really strong case there, um, in case, you know, somebody were to come back on us. Um, I'm not sure how to perceive there, but um I just want you folks to have that so that we can kind of hash about, read it and get it together.
I'd like to follow up with this, with an attorney, just to be sure, because if there actually is obstruction on the road. To me, that's logical, if the obstruction, we cannot see around a corner, that's logical. And so I, I don't want to give up on this.
And I, I, I'm not expecting you to, I just want you to have.
Well, thank you, it's, it's a good start.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea how many? Obstructions we're talking about that are on privately and that we can't turn back ourselves? I mean, I'm just curious, if it's a big number.
It's probably in the, under a dozen that I'm aware of, okay.
Unless you ride one of the big trucks.
Well, it's the same thing.
I mean, we were hitting mirrors the other day in the dump truck off the right.
Yeah.
You know, just going down.
That's an obstruction.
Um, however, again, you know, that's not every vehicle, is it a hazard, I guess it could be a hazard, but. Um. You know, there's, I, I can think of probably two, three locations right off the bat, where if it's not a hazard now, it's going to be.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, if, if it is a hazard or going to be, I would think if we approach the landowners and let them know, like, that's what we.
That'd be the first step.
That'd be, that should be the first.
But I know there's one place that we have, we did approach last year and we turned it back, and I think that's one of the places that you have in question. Um, across from the church and that was trimmed last year, and there's not much else we can trim on it without taking it down. Um, so I think that's going to be a hard ask, but. Cross the brow turn.
That quince.
Jake, come on.
Well, that space needs to go, sorry.
It does, no question.
It is, it is in the way, it is.
It is, and I, and I totally agree that it's in the way, I'm just.
I'm not.
I mean, it's also in the pedestrian's way when you're walking.
Yeah.
And it's also when you're trying to pull out there, you can't see.
Yep.
And there's, there's one down on Water Street that encroaches the sidewalk as well on the very end, that's another one that's going to be tough.
Okay.
Um, talking about trees, Wes, come up with a good thing about fire trucks. In my job for driveways and roads, they have to be three feet beyond the shoulder for the fire trucks to get by, because the mirrors and equipment and stuff. I don't know if that's, those for you too?
I mean, that's a good point, though, if the emergency vehicles, if you have to have the roads trimmed back.
Yep.
That should go for anywhere, it didn't matter. Yeah, I know, I don't want to start going, probably cutting things down without their permission, but if it is a safety issue. You think it would be easy enough to approach us, so. I mean, we'll.
I think a conversation or a letter or a conversation followed by a letter.
Right, we, we can approach each situation as needed, I mean, again, I don't think it's a huge number. Um. Our roads are kind of narrow to begin with, I mean, there's places in this island where you just, you've got to slow down if you're going on a corner, because you don't know what's coming.
Oh, you should.
You should, yes, or if you get into the summertime, you don't know if there's someone on a bicycle or ten people on a bicycle, so it's. There's only so much we can do, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Right.
But we, doesn't mean we shouldn't do what we can do, so, alright. Thank you for bringing this to us as well.
Absolutely.
Anything else? Alright, thank you, Mo.
Thank you.
Um, we'll move on to eight, bold business, it a town of Vinyl Haven versus Blackington Attorney authorizations.
So, I take this very long memo, just to, I wanted to organize my thoughts as much as anything. But one of the first things that I wanted to bring up is the concern I have about the budget. We did budget seventy thousand dollars for professional services, twenty thousand for legal and fifty thousand for engineering, but we've pretty much gone through that whole budget. There's twenty-six hundred dollars left, but this is uh including invoices through the end of October, and I'm sure there's more invoices. Uh, for instance, we just received another bill for nine thousand dollars uh for that Hurricane Island. Um, case. So my concern is that there's really no money left in that budget to cover additional legal fees. Um. So what I go on to say is if you, if you anticipate spending a lot more in legal fees, you would really need to go back to the town meeting. And ask for an additional appropriation. I don't know of any other contingency accounts in the budget. Article forty said in the, from the town meeting, said something about. The Board of Selectmen can transfer up to ten percent of unexpended balances from various accounts. As needed to provide for the smooth transition of town business, I'm not really sure. Um, a little gray to me, but if you, you know. I'm not really sure what unexpended balances they're talking about, but we're only five months into this budget, not even halfway, so. I don't know what, how we would determine what, what we would have for unexpended balances at this point in time. Um, so you have a couple of different options. With the case, one option is to find and contempt, contempt, sorry. So, um, Mr. Blackington has paid seven thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars of the court order. Uh, for, the court order was a total of nine thousand, eight seventy-seven, so there's a balance of two thousand, one thirty-seven. Uh, I visited the properties on November seventeenth, found, I found that Mr. Blackington was in compliance with the automobile graveyard order. As defined in our ordinance, I did bring some copies of the ordinance, you don't have a copy of it. Uh, I found that the property on one forty-three Pequot Road was in better condition than I'd seen it. In the past, but of course, there's still quite a bit of um junk scare. Um, whether or not it's a junkyard, I think it's more for Faye, the coenforcement officer to decide. Um. So if you want to continue with the court order and find him in contempt, there are a couple of motions that the attorney suggested, and those are listed. There, number one and two.
Yep.
So, if you decide to move forward with a legal action through the attorney, the burden of proof would lie with the town. And this is what Ben Plant said, I think that's his name, Ben Plant. Uh, and Mr. Blackington, okay. You decide to move forward with the legal action through the attorney, the burden of proof would lie with the town. To prove that Mr. Blackington is not in compliance with the automobile graveyard and junkyard ordinance. Faye, as CEO, would have to file an affidavit to that effect, and you would need specific proof, such as pictures and the affidavit. So there's that option. And then the other option would be no action, as Ben footed, if the board decides not to move forward with contempt proceedings. Then he says, I'm not sure that the board necessarily needs to make a motion to that effect. It can simply, you can simply refrain from authorizing my office to move forward with the contempt proceeding. So, there is a lien on the property. Um, which is a means of enforcement that would stay there. So, for instance, Mr. Blackington still owes two thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven. Uh, according to a court order that he agreed to, so he would still owe that money and. Um. For instance, you could accept a lesser amount, you could authorize the attorney to release the lien, you could wait until he paid the additional two thousand dollars. And then ask the attorney to release the lien. I know this is a lot, it's complicated. Uh, Fang and I are both here, if you have questions about what your options are, my recommendation would be to take no action. And when the court order of nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars is paid in full, then the board could release the lien. This would avoid any more legal fees.
What was the last payment, uh, when was the last payment he made?
Um, seventeen? No, he came in and paid another two thousand dollars. Um. Is it Monday, on Monday?
Was there any commitment to when the balance would be paid?
Not a specific commitment, only that he.
He hasn't until tomorrow, I think technically, right?
Pardon?
I think he is until tomorrow.
Let's do the.
I had, the attorney said the twenty-nine.
Also is due today, alright, so he'll be.
He's in contempt.
No, he needs to pay it in full.
I agree. We're not already taking a lesser amount, if you've already spent almost eighteen thousand dollars on legal fees and we haven't paid. If he pays it all, ninety-eight seventy-seven.
Balance of tw- twenty-one thirty-seven needs to be paid in full.
I personally have a real problem making a decision based on. What we're willing to pay for legal fees, if we actually have a situation, we should not let the budget dictate what we're going to do.
I agree.
We should have a meeting and do it, but we should not, that should be a last resort.
Because at this point, if you don't, I feel like if we don't move forward with contempt, it's just setting a precedent for someone else, well, I'm just going to never. Fix my code violations and know that I'll get away with it and never have to pay the full amount, and that's. I, I don't want to set that precedent.
We already have it, Mr. Blackington, I've been dealing with this for five years.
Right.
And every time you give him a deadline, he pushes it more. I'm at the, Marjorie and I are at odds with this. I believe it's time to pay the fight them. I'm tired of, I'll just get away with it. I have relented as far as this past year's violations, because what he's paying now is from the previous years.
Right.
He was in violation all summer, but as long as he's working on it, I guess we, the town, let him go. And he has cleaned it up a lot, but we still have a lot of debris there, we still have a lot of trash, we still have. Crap, I don't know how else to put it. And it needs to be cleaned up, they've given him chances to do shops, put it in, he hasn't done that.
Are they still advertising for, to take in old cars?
I have no idea.
Sorry, Marjorie, go ahead.
I guess, again, what I don't understand is there are plenty of other junkyard on this island, I don't understand how, how you can prosecute one person and not everybody else. I just don't, I don't understand that.
But are the other junkyards permitted, because we do have a permanent.
We have green permitted. And because of my surgery, I did not get the letter out, but it was sent out yesterday for them to, they have to pay an annual fifty dollars. There are other people who have gotten violations, who are waiting for the town to make it so they can take. Trucks or cars to the dump.
And again, so why do you offer other people uh an avenue or a delay? It's okay, because we're not taking, but it's not okay for Mr. Blackington, I guess I don't understand why you treat one person different than another.
We're not treating one different from the other, Mr. Blackton is over five years, if not ten years in violation. He also has had the same opportunity and chose not to do anything. He wants to fight his tooth and nail.
The other thing I just want to mention is that I really think that you should familiarize yourself with the automobile graveyard and junkyard ordinance. It does put some burden on municipal officers to enforce this ordinance. And every junkyard that you have committed is supposed to be reviewed every year and the license renewed. And there's also requirements for, for screening in our ordinance, I don't see any screening on any of these permitted junkyards, so I just. I feel like it's still, why are you enforcing something against one person and not another? That's the end of what I'm going to say, I should, that's just.
Marge, can I ask a question? Um. Who is supposed to review those permitted junkyards?
It says the municipal officers and code enforcement officer.
Okay.
Does Dana have a permit for the junkyard?
No, he won't, he, he just, he actually cannot get one, because the land trust own has the easements on his property and he has two quarries. And also he's too close to the town property of Pequot. And he cannot have a garage there either, he can have his own personal garage, but he cannot have a business garage there. These are just things that have come out.
I suppose we should. Review. All the information, you know, ordinance and everything before we make a decision on, on the junkyard part of it, but.
But.
Proceed with the.
But in this case, the agreement that was entered into by Mr. Black in last year, he is in contempt as of today, because he has not paid the full amount.
No, that's what I mean.
Right.
Take care of that, but not, you know, go back to the.
So it would just be, you're saying just make the motion for number two and not on the land use violations?
And tell we, maybe we should review that ordinance first, make it very clear to ourselves what we're doing.
But he's still looking.
He's in contempt on the monetary side.
That, that.
That is clear.
That needs to be paid, that should be paid.
It should have been paid today.
Today, but if not, it should be paid tomorrow, we have given many chances.
Mm-hmm.
Needs to be paid in full, needs.
He's in contempt as of now.
Right.
Not tomorrow, now.
But that's not the issue with the, with the other side of the story, with the junkyard mess. But that money, we've been through this before, where we've given him, given him a chance to. Um, given him a sixty days, whatever, to pay, and it keeps going and going and going, and we've been through this for, what, three years?
At least, if not more.
Well, just, uh, careful that you understand, if you're making the motion for contempt. I believe what Ben Plant said, that if you're. If, if you're not going to find him in contempt of the automobile graveyard and junkyard ordinance. Then you don't really need to make a motion.
Right.
If you're just, you can still enforce the payment.
Mm-hmm.
I think, that's my understanding of what he said.
But my understanding also with that is the fact that if he doesn't pay it, then he is in contempt of the court order.
Yes.
Okay, and what the implications from that, what is, no, assuming, what are the implications?
You still have a um, a so-called lien that will stay on the properties. That will not be released until that money is paid.
But if, but that happened for the reason, intent, or we find, if he's found in contempt or not, nothing really changed.
That saves, I'm, I want to understand your question.
I guess what I'm saying is, let's just, there are two situations, one he pays and one he doesn't. What's the difference between the two?
What are the consequences if he doesn't pay?
Yeah.
The lien stays on this property. The lien stays on this property.
It stays on, yeah, no matter whether we go to court or not, the lien is still there.
Correct.
I don't know, that's my, that was my question. What are the consequences of this?
There should be, if it's unpaid, there should be interest accruing. But if that is in the agreement, I'd probably not.
Executive session from the rest of this discussion with this.
I don't think you have, I don't think you can.
No, we can't, yeah, we can't, and we don't have the attorney available at the moment.
Um a table to next, to another time. A, a table, no, it looks right now to, we ought to get our act together a little more, so we're unified on this.
Yeah, no, that's what I suggest we.
So one of the statements that Ben's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt Pam.
Oh, no, that's fine. Yeah, fine.
One of the statements that Ben Plant, the attorney, made was if there's no evidence of properties reverting to junkyard. Or automobile graveyard, you shouldn't file for contempt. If you go to court, they will have to testify to the condition of the property. And that would be accompanied by an affidavit.
Well, at, at this point, I don't think we have a choice but to table this because. He hasn't paid the balance and we don't have the lawyer to discuss what. The next step is or whatnot.
Well, the next step would be, well, you're gonna either file for contempt or not, or not.
How long do we have to file, I guess is my question, the agreement ends today, so I assume we'd have at least thirty days. Right, to file.
I don't think there is a limit of time. I only took eighty K once, but if you're in contempt, it's the day you don't pay, you're at least supposed to. So he's in contempt as of now.
Right.
Tomorrow. If we can table it for two, for the next meeting in two weeks. But yet, no matter how much money he puts into us next two weeks, it's not acceptable.
He's still in contempt.
Still in contempt.
Yes. That is my understanding as well.
Okay, I got that right. That's been years.
Marjorie?
That's John.
Hi, um.
Address the chair.
Hello, Chair and everybody.
Go ahead.
I'm here for something else, but I have a little bit of experience with some of what you're talking about, not the specifics with. This individual, but you, I think when you talk with. Um attorney Plant, ask him sometimes when, uh for civil contempt. You can um seek your attorney's fees in having to enforce. The order, particularly if he entered into it willingly. Um and also you may be able to ask the court if you're gonna go in that direction for interest from the date of his. Um being in contempt and.
I mean, I think it. I think at this point, that's, that's what we should be doing, we should be looking for the full amount of legal expenses and interest on what has not been paid.
The full amount, I can't hear you.
Yes, I, at this point, he's now in contempt, correct?
Yeah.
We've spent more, almost double from what he's supposed to pay, has not paid it, I would think at this point, we would move forward to get all of our legal fees back. With interest that, on the portion that is unpaid from this date forward. But that's just my thoughts right now, but we can. I think the board agrees, we probably should table it, go over the ordinance on the graveyard portion as well. And come back to this next meeting, does that make the most sense right now?
Agreed.
So you'd be postponing discussion until December thirteenth?
Yes.
At that which time, we have the lawyer here for executive session.
Do we need to have?
That's up to you.
Well, I'm just concerned now, cause we're already over our budget for legal fees, so.
But, well, I, what Don said, sometimes you have to.
Right, I, yeah, I agree with that too, um.
I guess I disagree there, because you legally do not have a right to spend more money than it's appropriated, but I'll.
So we're gonna have to have.
All the time.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, and ask for money for legal fees.
Alright, let's. Gonna table this till next time. Let's move on to eight B, job descriptions, review and approval, public works and transfer station, so is that one? So we're gonna table that for next time as well. Eight C, final approval select ones by laws.
Alright, so this is just the final go around for the uh bylaws that we've reviewed several times. We had one, two, three readings, I think, and this is the final, I think this is good.
I mean, it's just the changes that we went over, correct?
Right, it's everything that was approved, this was just. Final.
I mean, we. Do I have to make a motion for this acceptance or?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion, we approve the select most bylaws as an end. All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright, excellent. Eight D, final approval, select board remote participation in public proceedings.
Again, this is a policy that we reviewed three, three times, this is the final version.
Does anyone have any other comments or things look good to me? Alright. Pam?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm all set.
Alright, I move. We adopt the updated. Or actually, I move, we adopt the remote participation, public proceedings policy for the vinyl select board that presented. All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright. Nine, new business.
On all business, can you, can I add one thing on that one? Just a question, right? Magic, we heard any more from the uh police chief on a, on a potential meeting?
I have no.
This is going on too long now, we really need to get a handle on this, so I'll get rid of them one for the other.
Could be under report of numbers.
I can't make him come out, I don't know how to, I mean, he said that he, you could um contact him at any time yourself, but. You didn't, you didn't feel like that was appropriate, you wanted him to.
I think we should go channel, yeah, I, I like, I want him in front of us, but explaining what they're not doing or what they are doing.
Alright, let's, we can. Report of members, we'll go over that in more detail. Signature. Nine A, new business, sorry, new business under nine, A E V charger funding deadline extended.
Well, that seemed like, at first, it seemed like it was a good idea, and then reading all the information that Gabe sent out, it's like. It's another pipe dream, so. Let the state put one down, a very common one.
Well, yeah, that seems, that's what they did in Nova Rock.
Right.
Yes, and it's out of order. The one in Rockland is out of.
And I still see people bringing their electric vehicles out here, so they must have. Alright, so. Should we move on from this then? Alright. Nine B, uh frumer boundary line confirmation agreement.
John, you're muted.
Thank you.
You're welcome, that's okay.
Um Chairman Poole and all other members, thank you for taking the time, put me on the agenda. And sorry, I can't be out there physically with you, but we're just knee deep with cranes around rebuilding, so. Um I'm in both hands. Um so what we've got just to, and I, I. Hold the documents I had submitted or before you, it's a boundary line confirmation agreement, which was. Um. Occasioned by uh something town entered into with John Airy. Where I guess in getting his uh affairs together and trying to sell a piece of land, he uh had to have a. Survey uh done, and then. Um there were in that survey for, I think, a couple of reasons, it was determined that a few. Lines needed to be adjusted and agreed upon. Um my understanding is the reasons for the adjustments are that in some historic. Surveys, there may have been um a little bit of, uh I don't know if it was a. Uh mistake or uh encompass headings, or if there are certain changes based on just. Literally natural magnetic forces, changing certain compass headings, but so. Um the airy in this survey. Um had a point. Uh which is seventy eight or so feet from a point in my land. And you, the town already agreed to start at that point and then go of. Fifteen hundred. Um fourteen hundred ninety seven. Uh feet in an approximately southerly. Um direction. And what my agreement does then is takes the same starting point. Um that you've already agreed to, and then projecting it in a northwesterly direction. Um and on the, from the agreement, it's. Uh five hundred twenty eight point seven nine feet to a one inch iron rod at the. Um identified compass heading. And that on your uh copy of the survey. Is that line is the dotted line in the upper left hand corner. And basically it adjusts that line. Um I think it's, it's effectively a triangle, it's basically seventy eight feet on one end and comes down to a. Point at the northerly end, so down to zero, and it's that little bit of a wedge. Um uh that corrects. Things and conforms them to the, what the surveyors that uh Airy hired. Said is the appropriate. Um place and location.
Previous.
So then what we've. Uh the boundary line confirmation agreement itself that I've submitted has all of the. Um appropriate registry of deeds, book and page references. Uh it specifically incorporates, identifies and incorporates by reference. The boundary survey itself, as has been updated as recently as September fourteenth. Um and then it has the deed descriptions, the deed descriptions were prepared by. Gartley and Dorsky, which is the surveying firm. Um that did, did the survey, and then I think I have all of. Um the. The signatures correct for people who are um the current board members. And uh if you all are. Uh so inclined to prove this, then it would require you all signing. Um and then I would sign it. That's it, this, this document would then go to the registry of deeds along with the survey itself. Um that Mr. Airy had prepared uh by Gartley and Dorsky, and all that would be recorded.
So just trying to figure out what, what's, where I'm looking, what I'm looking at, which, this one, yeah.
If, if you look at the dotted line in the upper left hand corner.
Yep.
That um is, it's directly above where it says the inhabitants of the town of Vinyl Haven.
Yep.
That line that is five hundred twenty eight. Point seven nine feet long.
Yep.
Is, it would be the, at uh compass heading of north thirty six degrees, twenty three minutes, fifty seven seconds west. Um that would be the new agreed upon confirmed. Boundary line separating the Boom Quarry property from the inhabitants of the town of Vinyl Haven property. And that, that adjusts. Um that little. Wedge, which previously appears to have existed. And is now corrected by the survey.
Okay.
On that, uh if you, if you look at that. Um at that dotted line, and you go the, from not the upper left most. Uh pin, but the one that's a little bit more to the right. Uh five hundred twenty eight point seven nine feet to down and to the right, that's the beginning point. Of the boundary line that you already agreed to with Airy. So, this, this current line is, is kind of perpendicular to the already recently agreed upon line.
Any more discussion from the board, any other questions? I think, this is the, this is the bigger of the survey.
The bigger one is the previous.
It is the previous, so this line is changing? I don't see how it's changing between the two documents.
Does John have something he can share on the screen?
I don't, but what, what is, what I, what I can tell you is. If you, the, the previous line basically went. Uh it wasn't, it was never, you know, fully. Um set out, it was just projected, but it went to that. Um. Iron pin, which is identified seventy eight feet. Above.
It went from here to there, and now it's going from here to here.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to, so it's. Just shifting this line down, it's making this piece of property slightly smaller. Yeah, but it's in agreement with what we already signed with John, so I, yeah, that.
In reasonable.
Yeah, I think we're good. Um. Yes. I'm gonna make a motion.
Two special town meeting. I think they should be wanting to have it, it should say.
This one right here.
Special power art.
Thirteen?
Yep.
Alright, so. Sorry.
We have to have this.
Prove that, it's proven sign this, so we don't need a motion, okay?
Yes, we do.
We do need a motion?
Do need a motion.
For the special town meeting, alright, I move that we. Sign the special town meeting warrant for December thirteenth, two hundred and twenty two, related to the. Um. Boundary line agreement with the town of Vinyl Haven and. The Boom Quarry Preservation Corporation, is that correct? Alright. Do I have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Alright. Do you want me to sign this one? Does that matter?
It doesn't matter which one this.
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little. Unusual. Don't you say it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just the second.
That's the second page, alright.
Second page, that's whole pass that post that.
Alright, I think we're all set on that, correct? Okay.
And that was December thirteenth?
Correct.
Thank you. And.
Thank you very much.
Yep, what I'll also do is get you all. Um I, Chair, if it's okay, I'll, I'll try and get it to um. Marjorie, but a, a full size copy, so uh of, of this, the survey thing here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, okay, thank you all very, very much.
Welcome.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, take care, bye.
You, alright.
Yeah. I know.
Nine C Madison McKenzie Young, quick clean deed.
This was the tax required property that we sold.
Really? Did they?
Yeah.
They did pay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, it comes simple. Okay. Then I mean, we sign the quick name deed.
We also got a delineation, so we've no way to put the road and stuff.
Anyone still got Colton Busman, right?
I'm still a Colton Busman.
All right, moved and seconded all's in favor.
Hi.
All right. Get the setback.
What?
Needs a setback. All right. Nine. I'm gonna move on to nine D airport lease.
So um I had a a meeting with Terry Waters and her accountant. McCann call. Um and they're fine with this draft of the lease. I sent them this marked up copy, as you recall, this was a marked up copy that came to the board of selectmen in September of twenty twenty. Quite some time ago now, and then uh I'm unsure of what happened after that. I did have a conversation with Andy and he said that there was just some disagreements with the Penobscot Island Air and you just didn't move forward at that time. I don't know what the details are, but I don't think it matters at this point.
Okay.
Terry Waters and, and Mr. Carl uh seem agreeable to this draft. He did, one of the things that he said, which I wouldn't think you'd disagree on, is um that he would prefer um uh, he and Terry would prefer a multi-year contract instead of just doing an annual. So if I go forward and, and try to finalize this, is that something you'd be interested in, a multi-year?
Um multi as in to agree.
He didn't say specifically.
It would seem logical to have. I mean, if this is what we want and both parties agree, unless.
I wanted to get your feelings on it.
Yeah, I, I don't see a reason why we shouldn't have, have it more than.
I don't, I'm opposed to multi-years.
I have a lot of problem with this agreement period though. There's not a lot of questions here, a lot of non-performance issues as far as I can see on it. Especially given for an obstacle there, no longer flies it, they pray out, I mean, and, and the mail and.
They did have a mail.
They do have mail.
Yeah, but come by both.
No, here comes the plane. We still have the mail.
Sure, all the time, because I've been uh told by, by a person who works for them, that much of the mail comes in by, on the first ferry.
Yeah, it comes in, some of it comes in a van, but they still have a mail flight.
It's packed.
That, that adds some.
Yeah, and, and, and the question is, is the rates have gone up? Is that a reasonable rate based on what they're doing? I know there's a, there's a, there's a real interest in maintaining that strip mainly uh through lease because of the insurance issue, but there's also issues regarding uh the necessary flights for, for people. So there's some pros and cons on this thing. But I went through it and I'm, I just thought there were a lot of unanswered questions, reading the details of this contract.
What is the, can you give me a specific thing?
I can actually tell you what I have underlined.
I'm not, I'm not understanding.
Now, you and I go that way if we want, we don't need to tie everyone's timer, but I, these are questions I had and I just, you know, maybe, maybe I just don't understand it now, so.
That's just a statement. It's not even.
No, there's a whole bunch of stuff there that go through.
Well, I, I would think it would be more appropriate to address your concerns with the full board, isn't it?
Well, I think.
I don't know what he's, what he finds.
Yeah.
Well, the, the, the town acquired the property.
Well, that's, that, that's, that, I just use that as a reference starting off. That's not a, that wasn't one of the major concerns. That was, that was just information where I started.
Okay.
But what, so what is your concern about? For example, C, the town acquired the property.
No, there's not, not, I'm, I'm skip over that. That was there with my starting out point, but there's next pages, you can see the.
What's the next section?
Um four, number four.
Government use of premises?
I just want to point out that was in there and that was, that was part of, you know, that's well, to it back, I can read up, read up what I'm actually talking about.
I'd like to.
Well, that gives the town the right to.
Yeah. Uh the emergency medical, my, my point is that from what I've heard and I'm not, and this is why I'm asking questions, that they were down to one pilot now. And more often than not, when I've heard that they haven't been able to make it, is the, the pilot for over hours. So therefore I'm not looking at them as being a real reliable.
Didn't need to make, make it, make.
In other words, if they pilot can fly so many hours in a, in a period, okay? Those, that's FAA laws, rule of regulation, whatever.
Yeah.
But we've had enough times when you couldn't get a medical, a flight out of here because they were limited on the hours available for someone to fly. And that was when they had three or four pilots. From what I understand today, that that they were down to one pilot for a while. I'm not sure if they still are or not.
But that, that's what you've heard.
Yes.
But none of this, I don't understand what you.
That's why I want to check into it. That's what.
What's that have to do with this lease?
Well, that's, are they capable of providing that service?
Well, if we don't, if you don't, what are you gonna do?
I don't know. That's, hold on.
So it's my understanding from my years on the ambulance service, which I assume is still the same, that they are not considered an ambulance evacuation. They, they fly um under a FAA waiver, which does not hold them liable or uh necessarily um in need to come out here. They, they do that more or less as a extra added, I believe, uh which has been the case since day one.
That's correct.
Because most of the patients that have to be taken over not via boat go life flight, correct? Because of that reason, because they're not approved to fly medical.
And if life flight comes in here, they fit the criteria to go on life flight as an evacuation mode.
Right.
They did, the um FAA did approve that waiver though, correct?
I would assume I'm not.
I think, I think, I mean, we went. This was in discussion.
And even if they, even if they have a pilot, if the weather conditions don't warrant it, the plane can't come out anyway, and then they have to resort to lobster boat or the ferry is the last resort, so.
There've been a number of changes there since Kevin passed away.
Yes, there have.
And, you know, the rates have gone sky high.
But the town has no, we have no say over private businesses.
But if you look at the contract.
This is just for them to use.
The runway.
The runway, the airstrip, has nothing to do with how they run their business. We have no right.
I guess, I guess what I, what I'm, what I'm really wondering is, I asked my answer questions and they were legitimate in my mind. And so the question was, are they fulfilling the everything in this contract? If the mail is coming by boat as opposed to being fallen over on a regular basis? And I'm, I know it's been done. I don't know if it's done all the time. That's these are the questions I have.
Comes regularly, when it can, it comes on the plane.
Yeah.
And yes, they have a van that comes over too.
Yeah.
But it does, whoa.
I I agree. I'm just wondering if there's not better options on the airport, on the, on the airport.
Like what?
I don't know.
No, 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 I'm not even gonna entertain that. I'm sorry, excuse me. We are not gonna find a reputable air line, airplane, whatever you wanna call it, service coming to Vinyl Haven. If we don't have Penobscot Air, exactly who do you suppose you're gonna go find?
I don't know.
No. I want to sign this lease, not gonna argue over this crap, because it's not even, it's ridiculous.
I mean, we're not.
We're not gonna tell them what to do.
No, no, but the, my, my point is right now, we, we went back and forth to this on this two years ago, it was never signed. There is no lease in place right now.
That's right.
Like, do we even need one?
Mm-hmm.
Does this protect the town anyway, other than, like, we have insurance? Like which we're using now to go through this potential, this lawsuit that someone sued. Apparently me and other people on the board. So do we need this lease in place?
As long as we have insurance, do we need the lease?
I'm asking, because we, we haven't had a lease in place for two years.
Right, right.
Um, the only thing I can think of is that I've um not since I've been here and since I've taken over the job recently, but in the past, I've had requests from other uh entities to fly in and out of here, uh one of which is uh like Mr. Cross, Dan Cross. Now, if we lease the
No, I'm not going.
Telling him either.
Excuse me, if we, may I finish?
Yes.
Yes.
So if we're leasing the um strip to Penobscot Island Air, it gets, it gives them the exclusive use.
Okay.
Um and I would frequently get calls from various entities to ask if they could fly into our airport and I was always saying, no, you can go to Penob, you can go to Owl's Head and fly over with Penobscot Island Air, but um we leased the strip exclusively to them.
Okay.
And that was the end of it.
Okay. So that's, that's a good reason, in my opinion, because.
Yes, let's sign the lease.
We should be opening up to private aircraft, to other companies, whatever. If another company that is gonna consistently fly out here and have the same type of um services being provided now, and they wanna maybe pay us more than this one dollar a month, then, then we can talk about it. But I, I am not aware of any other entity that has approached this town about leasing that airstrip.
Just private individuals.
Right, and that's not happening.
And that's not happening.
Pulling the camera where, because that, that's some, all right, so I agree, we should get this lease between the town and between, is it WHAM now?
Yeah.
Signed as, as soon as we can, and I'm also open to a multi-lease, multi-year agreement. I think we maybe should start with two, though. See how it goes.
Yes.
Because the rent. I don't know.
Like to twenty, twenty-five or twenty, twenty, so December of.
So.
Twenty-four would be.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Yeah, because that will get us through twenty-three, twenty-four, right? Yes, thank you. I mean, the one thing I would say on this is that the rent that we're charging them is essentially nothing. Do we need to revisit that at some point and maybe get more? Because there is more upkeep on that airstrip now. We are agreeing to cover all of the utilities and plow it and all that. So that is a chart, that is a, that is a cost to the town, so.
The cost benefit cost.
Perhaps, perhaps we need to revisit that. I'm not saying we're gonna charge them ten thousand dollars a month or anything like that, but we might want to consider that on the next renewal.
Exactly.
I agree, because everything, like Terry always justifies, everything is going up, so it's the same out here. In fact, it probably has doubled out here, so I, I agree with you, DW.
All right. Are there any other comments, questions on this topic? All right. So do we, we don't need to sign it now?
No, because. No, I don't have a final version.
Okay, that's fine. Do you need anything else from us on this particular item?
So there's a consensus to, for me to move forward.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, please. All right. We'll move on to number ten, port of town manager.
I don't have anything on this.
Okay. Then I will move on to eleven, reported members.
Longboard.
Dawn? Okay.
Um, I just have one thing to point out on the website, Marge. It says the next, the next select board meeting is December sixth. So.
I pointed that out to Hope. I thought she fixed it.
Um, it's still up as December sixth, just, just an FYI, because I zoomed in tonight. It's the only reason I noticed it.
Um, actually, now that we're talking about this, I want to bring up the schedule for next month, the thirteenth, that's it. Do, do people want to meet two days after Christmas? Because the next meeting will be the twenty-seventh, which I'm, I'm fine with.
Yeah, the most.
Once, once we get into January, that's the busiest time of the year for me, so I, I will be gone the second week of January. So if we met, if we pushed it back to that, the second of January, I think that would, then I wouldn't miss the second.
So you want it to go to?
If we, if, so if we meet the twenty-seventh, then our next meeting would be the tenth, and I will be gone that week.
So you want to move it to the?
So we either, we either meet the third and then the seventeenth, or we meet the twenty-seventh and the tenth and I'm not here, with, you know.
Why not just wait until after the new year and meet the third and the seventeenth?
That's what I, that's fine.
Would you prefer to do that? Would folks prefer to do that instead?
So, so you're gonna have a meeting on the twenty-seventh?
No, we're gonna have one on the thirteenth and then move it to the third.
Oh, okay.
And the seventeen. So we only, we'd only have one meeting next month. Does that make sense to you?
You're okay to meet the third, though? You're all.
I will be on the island. I will be very busy, but I will be on the island. And we'll have to make it quick, because I was all, probably have practice, so.
And then.
Could I just make a point that if we needed to meet in between any of these, for any particular reason, we could still have a meeting?
Yes, if something comes up and we have to meet.
Okay.
At some other point in December. I don't see that being a problem.
Okay.
Okay, so the meetings are December thirteenth, January third, January seventeenth.
That's currently what we have.
Okay. All right, that, that works for me.
All right. I mean, we, we could meet the twenty-seventh, but two days after Christmas, you know, I want to.
One last thing, can we agree to magic contacts, the police begin both getting them shut up? Because I really think we need it.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm not, yep, that, that's fine with me.
What's that?
We need to have our own department. We've looked into that and not, none of it said no, it's the cost and then you run into the same staffing issues that they're running into. You'd have to have at least a sheriff and then two deputies. And so how are we gonna get three deputies out, or two deputies and a sheriff? We can't even get one to stay here at the same time, so that, that's the problem we run into and, and we get the cost, but.
Yeah. Is it worth taking another look?
Yes, we, we certainly can take another look at it. I mean, if, if that's what we have to do, then that's what we have to do, but.
Bill, we've done a lot of research on that.
We can try.
Might be.
Worth asking them, yeah.
And, and then Marge, you wanted to think we talked about in the last meeting was the potential for following up with the ferry service, to see what their plan for that building?
Oh, yeah, I did do that. Um, I thought, I thought I could bring that with me. Anyways, they are going to um use that property to increase parking and the um improve the lineup procedures. So then I asked, well, what were, what are your plans for the actual building? Because a lot of people have said, well, is it, is it something that can be moved? Uh, and he was gonna get back to me on that.
That, I thought it was a, a modular unit, which means it probably could be.
It came into half, so I remember.
Yeah, so I did ask that question. I don't not necessarily for the town, but a lot of other entities have asked me what they're doing with it.
I'm just wondering, is it worthwhile making, no, considering uh whichever way we go, because we can't find affordable housing. Could we get a good deal from the ferry service on that building? And put it together a budget where we would actually have it as a part of the package for a deputy stay out here at a reasonable cost, because it is three bedroom.
Yeah, I mean, kick the tires, see, they say, go from there. I mean, it's.
On that, I'm talking about the actual town buying the, buying.
No, I, no, I, I agree, because the, the town. No, I, no, I, I agree because the, the town itself kinda needs housing for that reason and.
Yep.
We had, sometimes we have other. People come out for different types of work and we have trouble finding what they still gonna stay, so. It would be.
Need to move it to a different location.
Yes.
Yes, if it's possible, if the state wants to do that. I mean, we might as well just. See what their plans are with the building, the structure itself, what they're gonna do with it.
And he said he would give.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. All right, anything else? I move, we adjourn. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.
Um, there are copies of the junk card and.